Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, to order. May I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Schleeter?
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
And I'm here. Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Patz?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be held with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. Is there any board member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve items five A through five D on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six, school board announcements, does anyone have an announcement tonight?
Well, I would like to share that I did, was able to attend the PTO meeting at Pleasant View on a nice group of parents, and then also, they had an open house, I was able to attend it also. Not a real good turnout of parents, I'm not sure why, did chat with a couple of teachers, which I thought was interesting, I asked them a little bit about, you know, whether they were of the grading changes that were happening, you know, Common Core standards, just got to chat with a couple of teachers, I thought that was informative. I also got to attend the Oak Creek football game, kind of got to see what the construction's looking like and how things are shaping up there. And I also was able to attend the, um, the community group fundraising meeting that talked about the ambitious goals for the stadium project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, homecoming's coming up, and Friday, October 4th, the music department's putting on a chili dinner, so you can get tickets through Melissa or myself, or Tim.
Sure.
Is that the Thursday or the Friday?
It's Friday.
Oh, it's Friday before the game?
Friday before the game, from four to six. Chili or hot dog. Thank you. Anything else?
I was at the eighth grade math night at the middle school, and, um, they did some really nice, really nice renovation work over there, the math rooms looked really nice, also got a little tour of the new library and some of the things they did there, how they filled in the pit, and, and, uh, Mr. Reuters very, very proud of how things are going over there, and continuing to improve that school with what we can through, through the budget, um, so, all good things.
Hi, thanks very much. Item seven, school board calendar, we have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, October 9th, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Also a regular board meeting Wednesday, October 25th, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item eight, liaison reports, first we have the community education and recreation report by Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to sit down with Brad a few weeks ago, and, um, had a nice talk to us, a lot of stuff going on from the rec department side, a lot of, um, juggling he has to do with the construction and finding green space and things like that, so, um, but, um, just a few things that I wanted to kind of go over, and I actually didn't know he was going to be here, so if anybody has any questions, I'll probably just send them right over that way. Um, the kids club, they currently have over 400 kids enrolled between the five elementary schools, the program runs from seven to the bell, and then from the bell to 5:30, uh, and they're also open for half days and for full days, so that's quite the endeavor that they're doing at Kids Club. Aquatics was another, another hot button, um, uh, it was down for the summer due to the construction, but they were able to revamp some lessons, and, you know, there was some discussion, as you remember, Dr. Patz talked about, maybe moving things completely out of the district for some of the lessons, and, um, doesn't sound like that's something that, a direction where we're going to go, um, but, though, we are now able to allow kids to pass out of a level at any time, um, instead of having to go through the entire class and then pass out, uh, pass out, and then test out, they were able to, um, test out of a level in, in the session, um, which allows them to continue to move on. We took the time over the summer to have discussions about our lessons and, and how we deliver them, that's kind of what I was talking about, and we also realized this is a core program for the community, and these lessons are, um, the lessons are up and running right now. Let's see, with all of our programs, we have Franklin students as employees, and a lot of times Brad mentioned that, um, they're the first employer for a lot of the students, with the Kids Club, the aquatics, the youth sports, the summer programs, it employs at least 50 resident students. Uh, year will keep you, um, let's see, there's some, let's see, that going on, they partner with the city on healthcare, uh, with a lot of different areas, the healthcare providers run the following programs, uh, Safety City, Bike Rodeo, uh, they have a BMI program, Body Mass Index, at the elementary schools, numerous adult lecture series, and, uh, this is something we'll probably get together every few months, every, maybe every three months or so, he's working on the annual program or the annual?
Annual report.
And, okay, annual report, um, that we'll get a copy of, um, used to be part of the budget, now maybe we'll just have something like that provided electronically, so we can still see a lot of the programs that go on, but there's a lot going on, on the rec side, and it's a great tool, um, you know, we've had a lot of discussions at the board level about outreach to the community and keeping the community involved, and, and how we can connect with the community, and that's just a great extension of, of how we do it, so, something we don't want to gloss over and make sure that he's involved.
Do you know offhand how many are in the aquatics program? How many?
Our numbers are up from the same time last year, I don't have a total on what it is, we just run it up or we, but enrollment and the lessons is higher than it was this time last year.
What's the range generally, hundreds?
Oh, it's in the hundreds, yeah. Um, I can tell you that we have the first kid pass out of, passed through three different levels.
Test out.
Test out.
Yeah.
So, parents were excited about the new concept that, uh, they're able to see their kids succeed immediately, we refined some of the strokes and some of the stuff that they had to do to pass out, or pass up, um, so, that was the real work, but, yeah, lessons are going strong, all the employees from the summer came back and were eligible to work for us, so, we're up and running.
Are any adults in us a program?
Pardon me?
Any adults still in this one?
Yeah, and we have the adults, we still have the fitness walking and the water classes, and, yeah, everything is like it was before the summer.
My daughter's very excited it's back.
Good.
And there's some things that, um, they've been kicking around from, um, like a repair or construction standpoint, uh, the pool area that, um, we may hear more about later, but they're, they're looking at some things there too, that might not be a budget buster, but would really kind of get some of the things done that we need to get done to bring that up to where we need it to be. Any other questions? Cool.
Thank you. Okay, eight B is the curriculum liaison report, Mrs. Klein?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys an update, um, on some of the upcoming reports that we have, coming from, um, Curriculum and Instructional Services, tonight, a little bit lower down on the agenda, um, Mike and I are going to talk about, um, the annual school improvement process, there are some fairly big changes there. Uh, in November, we're going to be on the agenda for new course approvals, which we do every year about that time, that come out of the, um, curriculum review process, and we need to, um, approve those courses so that they can get into the high school handbook that gets published, um, at the beginning of the year. And then, um, the other thing in November will be youth options, and then in December we will have a report on professional development. And just a reminder of the areas that are under review this, this year, it's social studies, K through 12, science, um, in the high school only, art, and FIED slash health. So that's kind of a preview of what's going to be coming up the rest of the year, I'll do another update in January, kind of give you a preview of, uh, what to expect, second semester.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, and then, item eight C, personnel and policies, Mrs. Larson?
Yes, um, you all received a copy of the, um, document of the policies that are coming up, it's a schedule, um, it will let you know which policies we're going to be reviewing, the reason for their, uh, the review, and when you can expect to see them on the agenda. It's a working document, though, so things may change periodically.
Did any board members have any suggestions for additions?
None that were forwarded to myself, I don't know if anything was forwarded to Dr. Miller.
Being a working document, that's something we could provide, though, as the school board theory goes on.
Absolutely.
And you'll see there's a section that says added policy work, so whether that be something that, um, we take on because, um, things have changed at a state level or at our local level, or it's something the board wants to take on, we do always add policy.
I thought it was a little bit hard to read, but, since I got new glasses, it looks a lot different now.
If you zoom, there should be a zoom in factor on your computer, if you zoom in, it becomes much more clear. I don't know, it's up here on mine.
And I guess it might be more helpful, we're sorted then by the order that are coming before us, but, if it's a spreadsheet, I can do it myself. So, otherwise, it's, it's quite a big list, I was surprised.
How, I'm sorry, how did you want it sorted?
It's by, in the order of schedule, so the, in winter we'd see, or fall, the order that we're going to be seeing them come to us, I think it might be helpful. But I can adjust it.
Right now, I think they're in numerical order.
Mm-hmm, I see that.
I would like to suggest that we review the gift, gifts to schools policy, um, only because, I'm, I'm not, I'm not certain our policy covers, um, our gifts to school policy covers donations now for the golf outing, and then, also, now that we have the large, um, project that Dr. Patz is going to talk about next, maybe we should possibly at least discuss gifts to schools, not that it will change, but, maybe it's something just to discuss. I don't know.
That was the policy we reviewed last year, right?
I, that's what I was going to say, I think we did review it pretty, pretty recently.
We are going to have to take another look at it, because we're going to, uh, we're anticipating some substantial gifts, and with that, it's going to be tied to some naming rights questions and those kinds of things, so, uh, it will be something that once we get a little bit further down the road, we'll have to take a look at taking, putting it on the agenda.
Well, and that's what I thought, with us just discussing last year, the discussion may not be as in-depth, because we went through it, I agree that, there's some things that have changed, so, looking at it again might be warranted, but we hammered out a lot of it last year, so, I'd be okay with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Larson, Dr. Miller. Okay, um, under item nine, reports and presentations, Dr. Patz, superintendent's report?
Well, the construction update, if you've been by there, uh, the concessions and the restrooms are moving along pretty well, actually, they're doing a lot of pouring of some final things, and the roofing is the big issue that's going on right now, today they were just doing a little bit of the grading, uh, to take place around the area. Regarding the high school part, on Monday you'll start seeing steel go up, and, uh, concrete panels and so on, you probably won't see a lot of it exposed real quick, because it'll be, some of it will be behind walls. Right now, the cement blocks that you see going up are firewalls, and they have to go up before the steel's erected, so that's going to, it's going to take a pretty fast pace here, once they get all the steel on board. Still doing a little bit of footings and foundations in the auditorium, they were working on that today, we were over there for a construction meeting, and that, that's going very well as, as well. Uh, you'll hear more about it later on, but we will be moving the high school office, uh, over spring break, and that'll be down, really on the balcony of the gym, is where we're going to be renovating it to, that's the only place we can put it, so that main entrance will be that north entrance up there, once we get rolling, so, there are definitely going to be some inconveniences, but it's all going to work out fine, and there's been a lot of thought that's gone into it, so, uh, things will work out pretty well. Uh, there'll be some demolition of, in the existing corridor, that'll start, uh, I believe next week, and that would be the corridor, that would be south of the school offices, down towards the end by that cafeteria door, uh, there's a, a lot of work that has to be done there, so they're going to start demol, demolishing some of those kinds of things, so, um, it'll take a lot, we will be doing what we call, uh, sort of a capstone, or a capping off ceremony with the, the highest beam of the school, and that'll be in the, uh, Performing Arts Center, and what we'll be doing is, we'll be bringing the beam, literally, into the school, uh, and painting it white, or a lighter color, so all the kids can sign it, or put something on it, or whatever, and the board is welcome to do that as well, and then there'll be a ceremony when it's lift, literally lifted into place and, and set, and it's sort of like a topping off ceremony you've probably heard about in some larger buildings, so, a ceremonial event, but it's a big event, and so on, so, there's a lot going on with that. Uh, and right now, you know, we're, we're in pretty good shape, but we had decent weather the last couple of weeks, so they've actually been getting a lot done. Regarding the, uh, the Saber Stadium Project, uh, that's moving along very well, uh, they have pretty much outlined all of their specifications as far as sponsorship levels, donation levels, those kinds of things, they're going to be doing a whole lot of campaigning, they did some at the ballgame Friday night, uh, they'll be in the homecoming parade, uh, they're doing a lot of behind the scenes contacts, they have a list of about 80, uh, what they call key contacts that they'll be talking with, and we're working very closely with Dave Bartles, uh, almost on a daily basis, to communicate different things that are going back and forth, so it's a, it's a good partnership. Uh, as I'd mentioned, the first phase of that is to look at, uh, a turf field, as well as the, uh, eight lane track, and so there's a considerable amount of work that needs to be done. However, if, uh, if we do not have a considerable donation, and I would say that would approach a million dollars in the pool, by December 1st, this project will not move forward for next year, it'll keep moving forward, but it will not be able to go forward after that, and the reason for that is because actually next week, we have to start doing, um, final plans, and we have to submit some, uh, documents to the DNR and the city, and a lot of that takes a lot of time, and so, we, we, and we have to do it starting October 1st, so we've got about a week or two to get those kinds of documents ready, but at the same time, if we don't have the ability to say we're moving forward, then we can, we have to get to a point where we say, okay, it's not going to work anymore. And that date for us right now is December 1st, it's still a little bit in flux, but, uh, we'll just have to wait and see how that goes, and like I said, I, I threw out the number of a million dollars, I don't know that that's the magical number, but, uh, the district has to have a pretty good, uh, commitment to be able to move forward with that, and so, there's going to have to be some, some large donations that come in, and we'll hopefully be able to realize some of that in the future, so, it'll move forward regardless, uh, you know, whether they can prepare it for next fall is, is a big question mark, but it's doable, certainly, and if not, then it'll just keep on going, the work will continue, and the group is committed to see it through, and so we're pretty excited about the, the fact that there are a number of people that are, uh, sort of getting behind it, we've had a couple of calls already, how do I donate? We had a number of people ask questions at the ballgame on Friday night, so, uh, it's really just sort of getting its legs underneath them right now, but it's, uh, it's a, it's a pretty nice community event, so I think it'll, uh, or community project, I should say, let alone a school district project, so it'll, it'll go forward.
And there is a website, and, is it linked from our?
There is a website, it's SaberStadiumProject.com, and you do not have to put www, it's just SaberStadiumProject.com.
Is there a link from the, our website?
No, not yet.
I did visit the website, and I looked it over, and I do have, I think this project is great, but I do have a concern about a page on the website, the sponsors, sponsorship levels, um, there's an indication on there, under the diamond level donation, that if you donate $750,000, you get exclusive stadium naming rights. Well, how can that be given there?
Well, it, it was put on there, uh, not by our, let's just put it this way, that, that subject is open for discussion yet, and they know that, and I told them on numerous occasions, that it still has to be committed to board policy before anything like that is done, so, it's not a concern of ours, but it's, it's something that people that donate that kind of money, uh, have an expectation that something will probably be named after them, and I think that's reasonable, uh, everybody does it, and I think, uh, when the time comes where we need to do that, if there is a donation of sorts that require that, uh, that conversation is assured to take place with whoever that individual or group is, that's going to make that, so we would have time to put, uh, a policy in place, or, you know, make that recommendation, so, they know full well that everything is subject to, uh, school board approval, that this is a, a district, uh, you know, it's, it's you raise the money, we'll spend it for you type of project, uh, you know, they're going by our plan, and so it's not like, uh, a lot of people can come in and say, well, I'd like to see this done, and I'd like to see that done, there already is a plan, and it's a good plan, it's been well thought out, so, uh, but to your point, uh, yeah, I, I've noticed that too, but they prefer to keep it on there, it's just more of a, a selling point to try to get a large donor, uh, but there's also the caveat that they know full well that if, uh, anybody comes forward, uh, they'll, they'll be subject to that being approved.
Would it be reasonable to ask them to add that language, subject to board approval?
Well, they know it, but I think putting it on there is, uh, I don't think we would put it on the website, but I think we would certainly make it part of the donation pages, that, you know, for example, when a, a person, uh, makes a donation, they get a document
On the form?
On the form, yeah.
And, because we have two policies that are very clear, that we're not beholding to anyone for their donations, but we can, it is clear in our policy, we can name something after.
Right.
So, but, I, I just don't think that's right to say anyone has any exclusive naming rights.
I will speak to them about it again, uh, I, I know there's an understanding, but we can certainly make sure it's clear, uh, because I think every school district in the country has now realized that, if you're going to make these kinds of projects go, you need to have somebody that's going to come forward and, uh, be a significant supporter, and there are people that love to do that, so, we have to make that available to them, I believe.
Do you have a, a date set, or a, a range, or whatever, set on that beam ceremony?
Not yet, uh, they're looking at late November, possibly the first week of December, uh, just waiting to see how fast the steel goes up, and those kinds of things, and when they get that, the main beam here for, for signing, and those kinds of things, so, each week at our construction meeting, we get an update on it, we'll probably have something, uh, or I'll get something out to everybody as soon as I know about it.
And do you think we'll still, um, be able to utilize the concession stand up in that area, or will that get moved, for, by the gym, when, when the offices get moved?
No, it, uh, well-
That space will be utilized as well?
Part of it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, if it's, if it is used, it'll be a pretty restricted access, it'll have to come up through those north stairwell, store well and so on, so, stairways, staircase, so, but we will be using part of that room for office purposes. That's all.
Any other questions? Thank you. Item nine B, human resources report, enrollment update, Dr. Miller?
Okay, um, enrollment update from the third Friday count is headed your way, um, I apologize that you did not have it sooner, but the count was literally taken last Friday, and there are phone calls that are made, and follow-up that's done, to make sure that we have the correct numbers. These numbers are still unverified, we still have some more checking to do, but, um, this is the time of year where I bring you the numbers, based on who is seated currently in our schools. So if you want to just take a minute to, to take a look at it, um, and then I'm available to answer any questions you might have about it.
I know the seventh grade class is very, very large this year, did, did we, was it that big last year, or were there kids that came in after the K through sixth to the middle school, or is that open enrollment, or what made that so big?
We were, we were, we had a big sixth grade, it's just been a group that's been moving through.
So overall, it looks fairly, fairly flat?
Yeah, there really wasn't, um, a lot of growth between last year and this year.
And what did the budgeting do?
Uh, I think we had, uh, 20 resident students in, uh, I think, right now, it looks like we'll be about half of that, or a little bit less than half of that.
And, this includes open enrollment, right?
Yes, it does, and we did fill all of our open enrollment seats.
So, total enrollment's up then, at budget, or, or down about 10?
Total enrollment is up by six students.
Over last year?
Right, over last year, and even though we opened additional seats for open enrollment, some kids that were here last year left and went somewhere else, so we're up, I think only 11 seats there, and then for chapter 220, we're down about 14 seats, I think. And again, we've got some checking to do, but that's about where we are.
When do they apply for open enrollment, what time of the year?
February.
Spring?
February?
Yeah, February?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that, that may, I know, I'm not sure when the discussion is coming up about, um, reboundering, and we're not calling it redistributing, um, about open enrollment, and how we want to do that with, with the capacity we have, um, so that would be the time to, to address that, I think, rather than having that be filled already, and finding us, we can't even provide seats for the students who are in Franklin, so.
I agree with you, I think that we need to be very careful about our open enrollment until we know exactly how the boundaries will be adjusted.
That's one of our first criteria, but it, don't let it mislead you, that, that may not have any impact whatsoever, because most of those kids might be at a school that's low on attendance, uh, for example, Robinwood may have very few open enrollment kids, and a, and a high enrollment overall, and one of our lower enrollments, uh, schools may have a higher enrollment of open enrollment kids, so, but, uh, that's, we have a list of criteria of all those key things, and that is one of them that we're taking a look at, if we had open enrollment moved, or redistributed, or however we want to do, will that make a significant change? And it could, but it also couldn't, it just depends on where they're located.
Right, I've just, I've gotten feedback from some parents at, at elementary schools that their classes are big, bigger than what they're used to, and then, but then they see kids being bussed in from outside the area, and so their question naturally is, why are we opening up all these seats for students who aren't Franklin residents, when all that means is that we're having, we're, you know, increasing that teacher-student ratio, and so, student-teacher ratio, so.
But we looked at that very closely the year before to see what those class sizes are, and, we don't, I would say, I, I don't think there's a single building that would have an influx of open enrollment kids that has made the class size that much larger, other than maybe, maybe a student, maybe, two if that, so, that's, it's not a real valid argument, because their duty splits them up when they come in throughout the district, uh, pretty widespread for that very reason.
Yeah.
Also just because the other buildings have a little bit more room for them, so, and we've, we've turned a lot of people away from Robinwood this year, and something Pleasant View too.
Do they apply to a specific grade school, or just a district?
They put a preference down, but it's to the district.
To the district.
Right. And we didn't have any seats at Robinwood or Pleasant View, except for kindergarten this year, because of the size of those schools.
Once an open enrollment student is at a particular elementary school, um, are we, um, obligated to keep them at that elementary school?
No.
Just in the district? So that could become a, a boundary adjustment concern?
Right. I was just thinking from an overall standpoint, if that's the time that they have to apply, that may be a good time to have discussion at the, at the meeting, at the board meeting, you know, January or February, whatever, that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, if I read the, um, personnel report correct, we only added a small part of position to adjust to this enrollment?
Um, I'm not sure what-
I thought there was a-
I think there was a very part-time position at the high school, and that just had to do with the way the sections came out at the high school, so, um, with some of the larger classes at the elementary, we have hired more educational assistants this year to support, um, the teachers when, with the large class sizes.
And those wouldn't show up on your personnel report, because of that?
No, no, the board approves, um, individuals that are under contract, um, but all the other employees do not get approved by the board.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Miller. And then we have item nine D, I mean, I'm sorry, item nine C, people services report, seclusion and restraint, Mrs. Crowe?
You received, um, from me a memo, kind of explaining what Act 25 is about, seclusion and restraint, and also the data that we're required to report to you, so, um, I think it's self-explanatory, but if you have any questions, be happy to address them.
I do, I mean, why Pleasant View?
Um, we, we had, obviously, you know, some students there that, um, required this service, I said it would also be that, um, that school was very good at reporting.
Which is to say we could have- Which is to say we could have done a better job in some of the other areas.
Yeah. I think this was the first year that they were required to keep the data. So I would, you know, I would say to the board that that doesn't mean that when we presented this to the principals, that this didn't happen in other buildings. But I think, you know, there, this is a really new thing for them to have to do. And in particular, if it doesn't involve special ed, which seclusion and restraint goes for every student, that it just isn't something that's in their mindset to do. So that was really, I mean, we kind of look at this as a year that we learned a lot and we did some re-instruction and hope that next year our data will look a little bit different.
We weren't negligent in any way. It was just more in the reporting process. Because sometimes what they would define as an incident that required reporting is sort of commonplace. And some of the principals and people look at that as, well, I do this every day. Why should I report it now? And we just have to get in that mode a little bit better.
I have a question. I'm sure I'm just missing something on a very obvious level. But the number of restraints, we reported at twenty-four. Says four students were restrained and students with disabilities restrained were four. So all the students who were restrained were students with disabilities.
Correct.
Who are the other twenty?
That just means the number of restraints.
Number of restraints, multiple times.
So it was on those four, with those four students.
Thank you very much.
Here, go ahead.
I was just saying disabilities is defined as-
A special education. They would have to have been evaluated and have an IEP.
Okay.
So, if I recall correctly, from what I know about it, and correct me if I'm wrong, you have, you have a separate room and you're supposed to keep, where you're supposed to record this, a chart somewhere. That's in a special place at all times for them to record this. So are you supposed to, is it a separate chart to record seclusions in a separate for restraints? Or is it all combined or?
You wouldn't, there isn't a specific place all the time.
Okay.
Because, for example, at one school, I mean, we had a situation where a student was having what I'd call a meltdown. We removed the rest of the students from that classroom. So he was not taken anywhere.
I see.
The other students were removed. So there, there isn't going to be a, you know, a log for them in every room. And I think now, we used to do it that way before we had to report this data. Now we report it through Power School. And we also have on ONET, we have a report on ONET. So every time this, this occurs, the person who handled the seclusion or the restraint is responsible for the report and the administrator's responsible for Power School.
Thank you.
Okay. So next year, I mean, hopefully this will look a little bit different. But I think it's good, you know, for you to understand where it's coming from and that we're working again with everybody involved, some additional training and so on, so that we're really good at the reporting piece. Thank you.
Thanks. And we have nine D, and I'm going back to Mrs. Klein.
Mm-hmm. So I got an update on this from Mike and Wendy last week. We did a Google Hangout. And you guys were all happy, happy, you know, I got all my technical issues worked out now. So next time we need to do it, we will have audio as well.
Hangout now?
We can hang out.
We were creative though. We did audio through my phone and we looked at each other on the screen.
So it was almost, almost as good as a real one. But, so I just wanted to introduce a little bit about what Mike's going to go into in detail. There have been a lot of changes in state and federal requirements in the last year or two that, that have resulted in us having to adapt this process quite a lot. Mike's, like I said, Mike's going to go over the detail, but basically I just wanted to say a couple of general things. The new model that we're, that we're moving to uses a bridge that you saw in your report to kind of represent moving from the past into the future. And it brings together a lot of the initiatives that we were already doing. Things like personalized learning, response to intervention, standards-based grading. And it kind of provides a framework to, for all those things to work together. Because there is a lot of overlap and a lot of impact on one versus the other. I wanted to mention that it is also, it's a very data-intensive process and that's probably why Mike's going to be presenting tonight. And, and not only, you know, do they track the data, but they actually use that data to inform their decision-making as they go forward. So, you know, the idea is that as they do that, it's going to result in continuous improvement of our student learning. And then we'll have the data to prove that the kids are learning better. So hopefully it'll be a good thing. And like any change, it's, it's maybe a lot to grasp. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you very much, Melissa. The, the, we've got two, two main visuals in here. One is the bridge that Melissa referred to and the other one is a chart representing our framework for continuous practice. And they, they all fit together. It's one of the main messages and takeaways from this is that the, each one of these initiatives supports each other and that's what we try to reinforce with our, with our teachers. Before going to, you know, the report itself, I'd just like to comment that you may have seen the report cards come out this week or last week. And, you know, it's, this is the first time that we had a district kind of report. We used to just have school reports on there. And all of our schools and the district either meet or exceed expectations. And the relevance to this report is that all of this work feeds into that. All the initiatives and requirements that we have to do for the state, in addition to our local initiatives, are represented in a bottom-line way on those, on those annual report cards. So I just wanted to toss that in as a background piece since it's, it's recent, since we did have the Hangout. We've got hanging out, we've got passing out in Franklin. And this, this report is heavy on context. And it's about school improvement and it's about our, our building goals. But they don't live in isolation. They live in, among all of these initiatives that you see represented on the bridge. And it's just one of the things that, that's on the bridge. And the main change for us is that as an administrative team, we had to figure out how we were going to put together some of the requirements from educator effectiveness and our school goal process. And I just want to take a sec to explain how that, how that happened. In the past, we, we had a data retreat. And then each building would have a team of people studying data during August. They would roll out their building goals through the rest of the staff and the whole staff. Each staff member would put together some activities, either as a department or a small group, to do things that were with the kids that were going to support the learning goal that the school had. And then at the end of the year, we would measure the results and they would report out. And that's what's, those, summary of those report outs is in the back of this report from last year. And that was working really well for multiple years. And now with the educator effectiveness system that every district in the state is going to be using now and duty's on the state, one of the state-level committees for this and all our principals are trained in how to institute this. Educator Effectiveness has a piece of it where a principal, as part of his or her evaluation, has to have a school-level goal. It's called a school learning objective. And each teacher needs to have us, a teacher-level school, student learning objective. And so they're, they're called SLOs. So we've got these building-level SLOs and we've got individual teacher SLOs. And so we didn't want to duplicate processes. We've had the data retreat, school goal thing. Now we've got this requirement with the new SLO system and we decided to combine them. So we're, we're going to keep the data retreats in August. And instead of coming out with a school goal that will be supported by each teacher doing activities, that the school, that school-level goal will become the principal's SLO. And aligned with it, each teacher's SLO will be developed by them collaboratively with their principal. Instead of having activities to, little, activities to support this, they'll have their own goals to support it. And so we're not duplicating processes. We're combining them in a way that makes sense to where we can preserve the integrity of both of those systems. And that's the, the core of the impact that that regulation has had on us. And we've been able to combine it or blend it in in a way where our efforts are coordinated instead of separate and running parallel. So that's the, the key piece of, of, of the message from this report. So are there any questions on, on that piece? The rest of it is context. And all of these other pieces affect each other. The Smarter Balance Assessment System is going to replace WKCE. Everything we do is related to student achievement, which will be reflected in those test results. And so it's all, it's all connected. And then I just wanted to comment on the school goals themselves that are summarized at the end of the report. And there's a couple of things about this. These are summaries only. There's much, there were like full reports that each data team and the principal from each school gave at the end of the year. And there's a lot more to it than just this. This just shows us the results. They learn all kinds of things in what come, turns out to be like an action research project each year. Because they're trying strategies with the kids and then they're measuring the results. And they discard things that aren't working and they keep things that are. And it's, so when you look at some of the, these goals on here, the results on here, you say, holy cow, they didn't read their, they didn't meet their goal. Well, maybe they didn't meet the goal, but there's other learning that took place that was, may have been short of the goal, plus the other learning that they, that they gained in the process. So next year, when you see these, when you see this report, it's not going to say school goal. It's going to say SL, school, SLO. And we'll have the results in a similar fashion in this report, but it won't be based on teacher activities directly. It'll be based on the results of teachers' SLOs that are connected to the school-level SLO. So it's, a main takeaway is that it's coordinated. We're blending our processes to not only be true to the, the new rules that have come down, but also be true to the local initiatives that we have going. So any questions that Melissa or Wendy and I could help you with in, in understanding this or any details related to it?
So what are the reporting requirements to the board, if any at all, in terms of state requirement?
I don't think there are, I'm not aware of, of reporting requirements to the school board. I think it's important that you remain apprised that these processes are in place in a report like this.
And I think we've self-imposed requirements by the framework and the eight orbs around it. Those are the areas we feel our stakeholders should hear about and understand how we're growing and what we're doing to grow. So those are our measure areas to ensure our district, the students in our district are growing.
So and what we have here is really the results of last year?
Yes, right. Those are the, there's a page for each school and their goals are on there. And the rationale for the goals, you know, all the data that they studied in order to establish those goals. And then some summary of the results.
And are there goals now already set for thirteen, fourteen?
Well, yeah, they came out of the, of the data retreat and works a little bit differently under, under educator effectiveness. They came out of the data retreat and they identified areas that they thought would be their school SLO. But in the interest of using the most recent data to confirm or alter what those preliminary goals are, they're waiting for the MAP results to come out. And kids are, the MAP window closes October fourth. It's valuable data for us on the front end. And the principals will at that time finalize what the school goal is. And then the teachers' SLOs need to be collaboratively developed with the principal by October thirty, thirty-first?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, October twenty-fifth.
And this is all cataloged in a data system? I mean, it's documented and-
It'll be in TeachScape.
In TeachScape. So there is a system, statewide system that tracks by building? Is it, what was the building?
By teacher and principal.
They have to put their SLOs in TeachScape.
And then is there any periodic reporting or just beginning and end?
We have, well, in the, in the educator effectiveness, the principal has those collaboratively developed goals with, with each teacher in October. Then they have a mid-year meeting, a checkpoint of how those are going. And then they have a meeting in, was it May or June? It's an end-of-the-year report as part of that process. For, as far as reporting to the board, we're on schedule to have a report like this again next year, where we can look at the, you know, how last year's turned out, just like, or this year's turned out. And then of course, how do we know what's coming next?
Is this, I guess, why wouldn't, I kind of would expect to see this earlier, I guess. Because it's last year's, right?
Right.
And so why, why now? Why wouldn't it have been, I don't know, summer or something or I guess?
It's just been on the agenda. There's no reason why. It's just, there's lots going on. Agendas are full and it's the slot we've had.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a slot we had. It's, you know, we could consider moving. I suppose that maybe-
Although summer, we're kind of not thinking really well either, so.
Now that we've got these, these other goals coming in October and maybe we move it later, then you can look at the new ones and the old ones at the same time. We've done that in the past.
This is kind of really focused on student achievement and sort of what we should, we're supposed to be about, so.
Yep. The, the eight performance indicators are mostly focused on student achievement. There's also a technology proficiency area and there's also a student well-being area. So.
I guess on the data for that, you say there's a, there's a poll done. The results, you have, do you take results on that? But I don't see-
We're doing it for the first time in October.
Oh, okay. I thought we had done this.
It's a Gallup student poll. It's highly researched. It's low cost. It's quick. And we look forward to having those results because they survey students on hope, well-being, and engagement, which is, you know, right in the wheelhouse of that performance indicator called student well-being.
Every student takes it?
Yeah, grades five through twelve.
Nine in school.
Right. Takes, the average administration time for one kid to sit is eight and a half minutes. There's twenty questions. So it's, it's fast and we're going to pilot and see how it works for us.
So that's new on this data list. Anything else? Well, obviously the map is there, WKCE is there.
You mean, is there anything else new?
Right.
Um, yeah, there were, there were a couple of other things that, that were added that weren't there last year.
Your baseline technology this year.
Right. We're going to get the baseline technology in the, in the coming year, in the year that we're in right now. And the other thing that, that's new is college and career, or career, pardon me, college readiness. We were tracking in Plan, Explore and ACT. We were tracking just those scores. But along with those scores comes a rating on whether the student's score is- But along with those scores comes a rating on whether the student's score is, has the student on track for college readiness, even if they're in ninth grade or eighth grade or, or tenth grade, as well as for, the ACT at eleventh grade. And so we're going to track that piece too, that, that detail of college readiness.
How's it measured on, how would you measure that?
It's, it's provided by ACT. It's in the, they have a, they have a, an ACT score, and they say if you're at this level, you're on track to be college ready. So it's all researched out.
So it's based on what they know at that point in time?
Right, right. It's an indicator. And I think just to clarify, nothing is really new. Last year was the first year we used this, so we sat down with the principals and said, what we looked at or what we tracked, did it provide data that assisted in student growth or student improvement? And we didn't necessarily pick the best data or indicators last year, so we revised it so that we get actual results we can use to assist our students. So it, you know, it has kind of a new look to it, but it was just refining a process, a product that was in its first year.
And is, is it pretty much gathered, is your data retained by student? I mean, like this measure of hope, is that tied to a student that you would know who responded or is it?
They're not reported.
Or is it a group thing or?
Yeah, no, they're not, they're reported at the school level, not the individual level, and at the district level. And so, you don't see a rating on hope for an individual student. It's as, it's as, it's as an aggregate. And then, there are suggestions that come with the system about what you might do to address that. There's a high, high correlation, as Yudi can tell you, between hope and the student achievement. So it, it's definitely related to student achievement. If a kid can see a future for himself, there's, they're going to be more motivated and engaged.
But every other measure on here is at the student level? On track to graduate and career readiness, it's all at the student level? Tied to a student record that...
Uh, well, yes, right.
That parents are aware of and work with you or...
Yeah, I mean, WKCE and MAP and ACT, yeah, those parents have access to all that stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Is, is the report done? Because at, at the beginning I saw we had a youth options request that, are we supposed to approve that?
Yes.
So you, you were going to go into that next, okay? So there is a youth options request for an art history student. Did you have anything to report on that?
Right, it's out of our normal window, but students sometimes miss those deadlines and we don't like to deprive them of the opportunity if they're truly extending learning beyond what the Franklin curriculum can offer. And this student definitely has maxed out our high school art offerings and would like to add this course to the opportunity, to their opportunity and for this fall. Their...
Oh, okay. So even though, is it the statute that says it has to be, is the statute here that says it has to be done no later than March first?
Right, right. So you can choose not to approve it. We, we bring them forward because we, we, you know, vet them through our school curriculum to determine if it's a need or not. And in the past, the board has considered and granted them out of, out of the window.
Generally speaking, they, they, they have the real early approval dates to protect the school district from, you know, large numbers of applications that people are just coming forward with. And then, you can use the deadline as a way to reduce that because it is a very, it is a very early deadline. But this is just one, so.
How does our, this art history correspond with our art foundation class that we have at the high school, do you know?
Well, we touch on art history in all of our courses, but we don't concentrate on art history. And this student has interest in art after the high school. And this is a concentrated focus on all art history. So they get a little art history all through the year, but they don't necessarily get art history. Arts in review, and we just talked about courses today. And in the future, you wouldn't need to approve this. If our new courses are approved, we're looking at a more varied and extensive offerings for art. So we unfortunately don't offer anything concentrated in that area right now.
Do I hear a motion to approve the youth options request for art history?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second? Second, that. Second by Mrs. Klein, is there any discussion?
There, there is a deadline, right? March first? And they were aware of the deadline?
The student was not aware of the deadline.
Well, it's our responsibility to make them aware of the deadline.
We, we do have it published, but we don't, we don't send out email blasts or, the guidance counselors are aware of it, but we don't personally talk to every student, so you...
They have brochures, that explain the whole program. I think there's a copy of that in the report too.
Can we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Schlitter.
Sure. Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackowski?
No.
I say yes. Six to one.
Thank you, motion carries. The next item is item nine E. And we're back to our board member handbook draft. And at our last board meeting, let's see. We went through all the way to the end of page ten and Megan worked on putting those revisions into the handbook. And if you saw that, she did those revisions and put them in green. And then she also put a few more suggestions to save time onto the, the rest of the pages. So, are there, before we move on to page eleven, I'm hoping everybody is okay with the revision, you know, the corrections that were made, so we don't have to rec, go recycle through that again. Are there any comments or questions or concerns for everything we've done so far? Or, or anything that was skipped or missed? No, here, no, okay. Then we'll move on to page eleven. Eleven, closed sessions. You'll see in the green that there's a strikeout where it says, although the law allows for discussions in closed sessions, any action by the board must be taken in open session. Actually, in Wisconsin, that's not true. It's adva, I found, I was the one that found that, that it is advised that the board vote in open session unless it would compromise the need for us to go, the reason that we're going into closed session, under all of our exemptions. And I do have those statutes printed if anyone wants to see them. So that is the sentence that I found. I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns about that or any other, anything to add or if they don't like that, or if you want to see the statutes here.
Just a quick grammatical instead of vote in opens session, it's just open too?
Think of an example when voting in, in session would compromise the need for closed session. Can anybody think of anything?
Expulsion.
Well, that, that we already know, but, but we, we've already done that. We voted in a closed session recently.
Might have something to do with bargaining, if you have a specific motion regarding a wage offer or something.
It's also to do with land acquisition, that kind of thing.
Okay. Or, or something that would specifically name a person that we're, an employee, that it would name them to the community that we were dealing with.
Okay, that's fine, I was just... That makes sense.
Where was your correction? I'm sorry.
Uh, in the, in the green, the last, the sentence, it is advised that the board vote in opens session. Just the grammatical just loses the S.
Do you see that, Megan? Yeah, okay. Is that correction okay with everybody? Anything else on closed sessions? Then, did anyone have anything for, for meeting agendas? I know the, the little part in the green there was kind of mixed into prior pages. So, so we had said at the last meeting, very quickly before we tabled that, that we would take that out and possibly move it under meeting agendas and just put it a simple sentence. And so, this is pretty simple. It could be changed if anyone has any suggestions. Can't get much more simple than that. Is that okay? Okay, does anyone have any corrections for anything else on page eleven or additions And then page twelve. Just to, for board member attendance, just for a new board member, for one of the reasons that we, we do notify that we're not going to be here. I mean, we all know that we're here for a quorum, but just, that was going to be one of my suggestions and I put it on there. Don't have to keep it if no one likes it.
That part in the green to ensure there'll be a quorum.
Uh-huh. When it came to the part about electronic participation in meetings, and I can't remember what it said before, telecommunications, I believe it said before, because we had made a new policy, it didn't really correspond to our policies, so it had, it had to be taken out and Megan is just, this is just our policy?
Correct, I thought it would be convenient for discussion if the whole policy was here.
Yeah, so this is our whole policy, so we just have to decide, do we just, is it easier to just have it in? Does it need to be shortened? What do we want to do?
Looks good to me.
I'm fine, yeah.
Looks, looks good to me too.
I'll make a comment if I could. I think the very first bullet point is very restrictive because you may have a situation where somebody, a business person gets called out of town or whatever it might be, and they may not have that 24-hour notice per se. They may get called away in the morning of a meeting and so on and so forth, so according to this, they would not be able to participate. Am I reading that correct?
You are.
And I think, I think the idea is to have everybody have the opportunity to participate. I think that's a restriction that the board should consider because it could come up very legitimately where something in your family comes up, but you do have the ability to call in or whatever, but it's maybe hours before the board meeting. And I think that particular board member has a right to be part of the board process.
If I understand this right, this is our current policy.
This is our policy, so we don't have to change the policy.
Right.
This is our handbook, so. Yep.
I don't think we can make that change here unless we go back to...
No, we'd make it in the policy.
Well, you can make it here because you can change policy just by acknowledging that there's going to be a change of policy and formally do it at the next meeting, but for the purposes of doing a handbook, you can indicate that that's what we're going to do. We're not going to, you can decide how you're going to do that, and then that can be reflected in policy before this gets officially adopted or before it's printed and handed out.
So would you think of notices given as soon as possible?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the fair way to go because what other verbiage would you use?
Aren't we kind of engaging in changing our policy and it hasn't been posted on the agenda?
We're not talking policy, though. We're, we're talking the handbook and we're talking grammatical or verbiage. And I'm just simply saying that that verbiage right there is restrictive to this, so.
If we just take it out of the handbook, then we can discuss the policy at another time.
It doesn't change anything because you still have to have 24 hours, unless that policy's changed.
Right. Our only concern when we did that was because we just wanted to make sure, depending on where we were, that we had time to set up, set it up. I don't know if we had any real restrictions on it.
Does it take time?
No.
To set it up? No.
Well, that's kind of covered with the second point there, if the appropriate equipment is in place. Because we, we did run into a situation where we were in a different building and then it was difficult to do where here it's not that difficult. So we probably have that covered as well.
Yeah, this, this reads that it's not allowed unless 24 hours notice is given, but maybe the intent was more that we can't guarantee that you can participate unless you give 24 hours. It doesn't mean you can't...
The idea is we want to know ahead of time so we can make arrangements and so on.
Right, but...
I'm, I'm just simply saying, if you're going to follow strict letters of the law, a time which I don't think is a good idea in policy, you have to have some flexibility in there to, to give yourself a little leeway. It is, you could put it, it is advised that 24-hour notice be given or something like that.
Well, the handbook isn't, the handbook isn't policy, so we had said whenever policy changes, we can change the handbook. So maybe we should leave this and then if we don't like the policy, change the policy because when we approved the policy, we said if it didn't work, we would look at it.
We'd come back and look at it.
So if we don't like the policy, Mrs. Larson, if you want to put it on there to change it.
I, I agree. If the policy is what's stated here, that's what we should have here and change this when the policy changes. Because this is only, again, a guideline.
Then I would suggest that we put the policy on the next upcoming agenda and we table the discussion on this or table approval on this until we change our policy.
We could still approve this and then, and then this, whenever policy changes, it just, this just gets changed.
Right. Because you don't want your, your handbook to be against the policy.
Right, and as far as approving the handbook, I, I think we need to, I don't think anywhere in here tells us how this gets updated and stays current. Is that, is there a section here that...
We can just, we can just add like, like a line at the bottom that says, when policy changes, anything in here will automatically change. I think that would, so we don't have to keep updating it. I don't know.
Probably just the same way you do policy. Yeah. Yeah, this handbook shall reflect any changes in policy from time to time.
But we, we did say otherwise, we're going to, we'd probably look at it once a year. But, but it has to, it can only be changed with the full, vote of the full board, right? It doesn't just change...
Because we said, because one of us thinks it should.
Because the policy changed. Well, if a po, if a direct policy changes, it has, that verbiage has to change. If the handbook is in conflict with the policy.
Right, yeah.
But, but only this one section is exact policy verbiage. The rest of it is definitely open to interpretation and I personally wouldn't feel comfortable with somebody just changing it unless the board reviewed it and all, well, the majority agreed.
Agree?
Is he not in your mind?
So I think the, the handbook can be approved as it is, understanding we have this desire to change the policy. So procedurally, let's get the policy on, on the meeting and let's change the policy and then that'll, that will facilitate the change in the handbook because it will have to change because it would be otherwise against policy. But that would allow us to move it off the, sorry, that would allow us to move it off the agenda and then...
It just sort of seems like we're spinning our wheels, though, if we're going to come back and change this policy at our next meeting and then come back and re-approve the new board... and then come back and re-approve the new board member handbook, why couldn't we just table approving this, change our policy, followed by approving the handbook?
We could finish our discussion tonight.
Yeah, we can finish it, exactly, that's what I'm saying. Let's finish the discussion, but if, if it's, um, if we want to change the policy, let's change the policy first, then approve this with the change in it. So, we're not approving this, changing policy, coming back and then changing the handbook. That just sort of seems futile.
We can do that, but if we have a sentence at the end that states that the, this handbook, this guideline, or whatever it's called, handbook, will automatically change as, and be current as policy changes, then, um, because we can't have anything in here that would be in conflict with the policy.
I don't think it can automatically change. That's the, that's what I have an issue with. I don't think anything automatically changes.
How about if we, instead of putting the policy in here, reference the policy? Participation takes, shall take place under the board policy, whatever the number is, which generally has restrictions on, you know, just generally describe it so that the board member who's using this knows that it would be useful to go and reference the policy. That way we can, like we said, let's get this done here. And just link it to the policy.
What do you think of that?
We could just say, um, requirements for participating are located in policy, whatever, instead of the whole, the three bullet points in that.
That's really what, what handbook should do. They're not meant to put policy, you have a policy written already. It should just simply have a, a one sentence, refer to board policy regarding electronic participation in meetings. You don't have to go into all that right here.
I really think that we've gone above and beyond what this was meant to be, what kind of document this was meant to be because I know when Amy and Dr. Patz and I looked at it, there were not board, board handbooks that were this lengthy and had all of these little minute details in it that, you know, it's just supposed to be a quick snapshot, an overview. This is what is going to happen. You have to be a board member to really understand what's going to happen, to really understand what your participation level is going to be. This is just a snapshot. Here's, here's, here's things that are going to happen. Here's what to expect. It shouldn't be this long, lengthy explanation of every little piece of minutia that goes on at these meetings.
It's the same length as it was when we got it.
Well, and, and that was my opinion from when we got it. So, I'm just, I, I'm now airing my opinion at this point because I think we're just belaboring every paragraph in this document. It was never meant to be like this.
That's because it was cut and pasted from other documents from around the nation. I mean, we had to have it, we had to have it correspond to our board.
I would disagree with you on that, but that's okay. So, um, we need to make a decision on what we're going to do with this electronic participation at meetings.
And it's actually, isn't it virtual attendance? For policy eight three oh five?
That's what you could reference in here. You could just simply say, "reference virtual attendance at board meeting policy."
Number eight three zero five.
Which has, uh, you know, notification requirements. So, they kind of have an idea what is in their policy.
Um, electronic participation at meetings is permitted referencing board policy, whatever the number is.
Yeah.
And you don't have to keep coming back and changing your handbook. All you have to do is when you change policy, it automatically will.
Right, yes, exactly, right.
I mean, that's all we need is just that one little sentence in there.
Yeah, that's a good sentence.
Thank you.
I concur.
Me, too.
Did that make?
Okay. Anything else?
And I would just maybe add that we're going to review this once a year and to kind of say when we should do that. So, it's clear we are going to look at this once a year.
Maybe we should review it before election time?
Yeah, that's true because the new, new members would get that.
Ooh. And then there was.
There was one paragraph that, uh, Mr. Millsor worked on, um, that was added, I believe, this morning. We got an email update about that. And if you didn't get to read it, it says the school district, well, that's about the.
That was on page ten.
Page ten.
I think it was ten, nine.
Nine, page nine.
Eight.
Eight. Ten, ninety, okay, budget process, so that. If, if you want to open it up and read that and we give your comments or approval, then we'll be done and ready to approve this.
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
I agree.
Any comments?
Well, I guess I think it could probably be a little clearer on when you're going to be voting and what that vote means. You know? It might be important for board members to know when they're voting on the budget. I don't think it quite says that here, so.
Well, that would be included on, as an agenda item because that could change if you, if you stipulate a specific date.
Well, do we vote on the first draft, Jim? Is there a vote on that?
Yes.
You can say that, you know, you're going to, you're going to be voting on the first draft and when is that, June or before the end of fiscal year? And then you'll be, you don't say anything about the, um, the meeting, the, uh, the annual meeting unless it's out of context. I'm only looking at your, is that covered somewhere else in the?
The notes I received from the board discussion were to remove the dates and remove the, the reference to the annual meeting, so.
That's true. That's because, because at the last one, we, we said the board really doesn't have anything to do with the annual meeting because we're citizens at that meeting, so.
Absent, or outside of the paragraph that you're reviewing there and the paragraph that was already in the document, it reads, "The board will have time to review the budget and ask questions before the board votes to approve the draft at a meeting in June or July."
Does that still stay, does that stay there?
That is still, unless the paragraph that Jim put together replaces that.
We were asked to come back and do an entire new paragraph and have Mr. Millsor do it.
I, I thought it was to replace the whole section, right? Or no, just to replace the first sentence. The first paragraph, I mean.
Okay.
I mean, I'm fine with just adding in there, Linda, that we vote on it, um, but I don't necessarily want to tie us to a certain month.
Because?
Because I just feel like that's too specific for the purposes of this document.
I think it's helpful.
I don't understand why, we, we do it in June almost every time, right?
Uh, except for last year.
So, I don't think we're really putting anything in here that hasn't happened 99.9% of the time.
And the reason we didn't do it in June last year was?
Because we didn't have a.
I don't recall why we got delayed until July.
Because the vote didn't, uh, didn't pass.
Is that the reason?
Mm-hmm. The vote was taken.
I, I just don't recall. That's all I'm asking.
This year, though? No. The vote passed. But we went in July this year. It just happened that way.
How about we say something, why don't we typically vote before the beginning of the new fiscal year?
Exactly, exactly.
That's okay.
Again, this document's just an overview, so I just hate to tie us into a specific date for an overview. I mean, I certainly, that vote is something that, um, when that new board member meets with, say, Mr. Millsor for an introduction, I'm sure that's something that can be discussed then or pointed out then or mentioned then, but I just hate to tie us in on this document that's just supposed to be a, a snapshot of this is what it's like to be a board member. Because you learn as you go.
We could say, "Refer, reference, um, the budget calendar that you keep, Mr. Millsor."
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Or we could just say something like, "We typically vote before the beginning of the fiscal year" to get us started, something like that. Not saying we have to, but that's what's typical.
I like the budget calendar thing.
I like the budget calendar, too.
Okay, I'm good with that, too.
What would that read, Janet?
According to the budget calendar.
According to the budget calendar? At the end of the.
I have to massage the sentence in there or something.
You're saying at the beginning of the paragraph, "According to the budget calendar."
Could put it at the very end.
Oh, you like it at the end? I don't care where it goes. You just have to make the decision.
I like it at the beginning, actually.
So, just take the paragraph, start it with, "According to the budget calendar."
That's till the school district has.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I am, too.
We're not keeping any of what we have before?
Is there something you, you specifically would like?
I'd like the first sentence.
Pardon?
The, the board is responsible for the adoption of, of the budget for the school district. I just want that sentence.
It's the last sentence.
Is the last sentence a new one?
Yeah.
Okay.
There it is.
Did you get all that, Megan?
Just a second.
Is there anything else that anyone would like before we have a motion to approve this board member?
Are we going to add anything about reviewing it once a year?
Oh, yes, we should do that.
You can just put parenthetical reference if you want. This document will be reviewed annually by the Board of Education.
You, you might precede that with a sentence like, "This handbook is consistent with school board policy and will be reviewed."
Reflecting the policy. And did we have a time in mind?
Perfect.
Did we say before April or what did you guys?
Well, I, I said that and then Dr. Patz had mentioned maybe at the first, um, excuse me, the retreat to have the new member have some say.
I'm not sure at what point of reference a new member would have in a document like this.
And hopefully we wouldn't spend a lot of time on it either.
Yeah.
Well, they'd be able to come in and have you explain the document to them and explain the changes in a real formal setting.
Either way, we could do it.
I just think let's leave it annually and we can decide later.
Right.
When. Just have to do it sometime before, you know.
I'll just pick April.
September twenty-fifth.
Pick a month.
Well, because if one year it doesn't happen in April, now we're in violation of the heading.
I can forgive myself if it doesn't happen, but at least we have a plan.
We have a plan that we know we will review it annually. That's the plan. We, we can't tie ourselves down to these things. There's too many other important things that come up. There's curriculum review, there's all these other important things that come up. We cannot be tied to that. And then when we miss that date in April, then we hear, "We missed that date in April." And then it's, it's a huge thing and it doesn't need to be like that. We will review the document annually. That's it. We don't have to tie ourselves to that document or to that date.
It's a month.
Well, let's, shall we take a vote on that? I, I can make a motion for that.
I will let it go for a year, we'll see how it goes.
Give me change.
Exactly.
All right, I'm letting it go for a year.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I want to work with you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the Franklin Public Schools Board of Education member handbook as, with the changes that were approved today?
I would make that motion.
I will second.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mrs. Schleter. Any discussion?
So, where it'll be located? On the website?
Well, it should be on board docs, I would think.
Board docs, then?
In the library, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the handbook, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Handbook is approved. Thank you. Item nine F, Treasurers' Report. Mrs. Witkowski.
Okay, cash balances of, as of September twenty thirteen. In the general fund, we have fourteen million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. In the debt service fund, we have two million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, zero, three, one. And prior to October twenty-third, we anticipate cash requirements in the amount of four million dollars for the September thirtieth and October fifteenth payrolls and accounts payable.
Any questions?
I, I have just one question and I don't remember all the policies that are on the list and I'm not sure which policy it would be under, but is there a policy that's up for review as it currently stands that would relate to employee reimbursement? Or is there a policy entitled such or where would be fine information on that?
I don't think there's a specific policy that's about employee reimbursement.
Oh, well, okay. Like continuing education or things like that?
That would be contained in a, perhaps in a benefits policy if it existed.
Okay.
There's the administrator benef, benefits.
Portion of the handbook or what do you mean?
It's in the policy, school board policy. There's policy on administrative benefits. Something like that would be contained in there.
Okay, and is that up for review?
It is.
It is?
Mm-hmm. It's on our list.
Okay. Well, maybe then that would be more germane time to have that discussion.
And then, um, on the check register, we can talk about check register now? I would, I had asked about, um, uh, splitting out the checks related to the, uh, the project and you did indicate, Jim, that that was possible.
Uh, for the referendum project.
Correct.
We could do that.
Could you please do that in the future?
Sure. That's the way the board would like to see it. We could do it that way.
Why do, why would that, um, why would you want to seem separately?
Because it's a separate project?
Yeah, but all the other stuff, we don't have separate listings for textbooks or separate listings for transportation or separate listings for insurance. So, why for a building project would we break it out? I mean, why would we make an exception for that?
Textbooks and other things aren't.
Why don't we just take a vote?
Passed by referendum.
So, that would be essentially the CG, CG Schmidt checks and the Epstein Ewen checks.
Right, and we're, we're just about done with the Epstein Ewen checks. So, from now on, it'll be almost entirely the CG Schmidt checks because they're paying the subcontractors.
We can take a vote.
But don't we, don't we already get, isn't it included in our, um, report already?
The totals are.
The totals, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we would know if we were going over budget.
Oh, definitely. You'd know if you were going over budget.
So, I guess that's what, I'm thinking that would serve the purpose. I assume that's what you're looking for, Linda, but, um, maybe not. I probably shouldn't.
I'm just interested in seeing the, uh, the cash flow as it goes out month to month on the project.
Can you make a motion, Linda, so we can have a discussion?
I would make a, a motion that we, uh, sort the check register so that we separate the referendum project from the other checks. And I also would like to ask if we might separate the, um, any checks related to the, um, community recreation, that's also a separate fund, correct? I'm assuming that that's why you're able to do this because it's a separate fund?
Uh, no, it's a separate checking account.
Oh. Okay, then I'll just leave my motion then to, uh, the, uh, the project then.
A second.
Can you repeat your motion because you, you went off?
Because I, I would make a motion that we modify the check register report to separate the checks related to the referendum project from other checks.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Witkowski, a second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there any discussion?
First question I'd have would be from, Jim, would that just require running a separate check register or would you toggle the checks by number? How easy would that be for you to just put them in? It's like, one of your emails said, "These would be checks in a different number range." So, that would be just a matter of sorting the register or what?
Right, if you, if you look at those checks, they're a four-digit number for the referendum projects. That's different than anything else. And that's why I pointed out that that one would be really relatively easy to do. Uh, it's, if we started getting into the other projects we're doing, those aren't separate at all and there's multiple projects on one invoice from a vendor and that would become really hard to pull out. Uh, but this one would be relatively easy to just bring that, say, down to the bottom and have that as a separate total, separate checks and a separate total.
But also knowing that those are four-digit check numbers, it's really easy just to skim down the list with your eye and see, I mean, they stand out. I don't know, I just don't think it's necessary, but, um, you know, I guess it doesn't hurt anything either.
So, that would mean also that, sorry, Alan, that Richards Street Supply LLC would be part of the referendum project because it's in a four-digit check.
Right.
Got it.
Jim, what was that last comment you made about breaking other things out? I didn't exactly follow that.
Uh, the, the. Uh, the, the referendum...
Maybe I should be more specific. Were you talking about the concession stand?
Yeah, the concession stand project came up, or another project. Those kinds of things, uh, don't have a separate fund. They don't have a separate checking account. They don't have any of that. So, then we'd have to do some work to pull out each of those little things monthly for, for a report. But for these, they stand out, they're a separate checking account entirely, so they can be broken out pretty easily.
Okay, because at one point you had said that we didn't use CG Schmidt for the concession stands. We use another contractor.
Right.
And it was a general contractor. So, I made the assumption that all monies would flow to a particular contractor. And actually, breaking it out would be a function of knowing who the contractor was and just finding those names on the, on the check register. I mean, we could find it quite easily ourselves.
For, for the most part. You know, there's always extra things that we're doing, or we picked up this task, or that task, or whatever. There, there are multiple things when it comes down to it, but for the most part, that would work.
Who is the contractor?
Marso.
Marso. Spelled.
M-A-R-S-O.
Too easy. Thank you.
Their name is all over the signs at the high school, too. I was just there last night for the soccer game. So, it's strictly the referendum project, and it's just sorting. So, strictly referendum project, just sorting. Any other discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
I say yes.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you. Uh, any other questions on the Treasurers Report? Hearing none? Thank you, hearing none, we'll move on to board meeting debriefing. Does anyone have any comments on the board meeting tonight? Hearing no comments, we'll move on to item eleven, future agenda items. We have the budget review process for October ninth. And currently, uh, that's the main item right now for future agenda items.
I have three things I'd like to submit. One would be a swimming pool proposal. The second would be a summer school report for this past year's summer school and an update on the boundary adjustment process.
Is that all for the ninth?
Mm-hmm.
I'll be having my meeting with Luanne, but I don't know when that will happen and when I'll have my reports.
For liaison report?
For liaison, so, so I won't schedule that.
That's okay.
Do we have any further information on the budget review process? Is this a review of a process that is existing? Are we going to make up a budget process? I mean, what?
Now, this, this item is an item that Mrs., you and Mrs. Witkowski had suggested. So, um, hopefully, we'll be bringing some items to the table.
Can we function as a small committee? Are we permitted to perhaps gather and discuss, or?
Well, if it's just the two of us?
Well, I mean, if the board would like you, would like you to go ahead and be a committee for the, for this purpose to, to bring forward some suggestions for the budget review process.
We had a committee like this, that Mrs...
Two years ago.
Two years ago, and, uh...
And we, it was, we spent a lot of time and made a lot of changes at that point in time, yeah.
I guess it would be important for us to know if there's issues out there because we have a pretty strong budget process. It goes well. We're always under budget or, you know, the budget's balanced. So, uh, it would be important for us as a district leadership team, if there are issues, to know what they are because, um, right now it works very, very well for us. So, I would just offer that out.
Well, the, the budget process is actually, when we receive the budget, it's kind of laid out as to what the process is, right in the budget, isn't it? Okay. So, that's the, the basis.
It'd be nice to not, I think we need to get together so we don't come in and sit here and not have anything to talk about.
We'll get together.
So, is the board, would the board approve of that, of them?
Do we need to approve a committee if it's just two members getting together?
Well, we should just say, yep, you know, have consensus that we should have a committee. Is anyone opposed?
I don't have any opposition to that.
Is anyone opposed?
Yes. I'd like to know, so just make everybody aware that we...
It looks like it's okay that you have a committee.
Which is consisting of Linda and Alan, right?
And you'll be ready to present something on October ninth?
No, I didn't think that. Okay, right.
I'm sure it's going to take more than one meeting for us to have some discussions. Nice and early, so... Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And we adjourned at, um, seven thirty six.